Eddie.
I'd like to call the regular full board of Alderman meeting for January ninth to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
The United States.
States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation under God. God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Always terrible. You know, I went to the, the police commission meeting recently and they, they nailed it. They, they do it all in unison. For some reason we're, we're terrible at doing the pledge of allegiance, but. Many of it. Moving on, roll call.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Farrar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yes.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Ginetti.
Here.
Alderman Knott. Alderman Knott.
Bob K at the bottom.
He's here. Alderman Hardy.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Duranti.
Here.
I believe you have all but, Alderman Adamowski.
Nice.
Is he here? Is he there?
Yes.
Then you have a full house fourteen present.
Perfect attendance. Everybody, everybody gets a star for the day.
That's right.
From the teacher. Um, all right, moving on, uh, minutes for approval. We had two meetings on December twelfth, the organizational minutes and the, uh, regular, uh, minutes that were distributed to you.
Motion to a separate minutes. Second.
Motion by Mamon. Who was the second or?
Yaman.
Yaman. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That were absent? Okay, motion carries. Um, and moving on.
Is that sure?
Yes.
Can we just first acknowledge that today's law enforcement appreciation day and thank our officers for their service?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. It's also National Hot Balloon Day, but, um, there's nobody to honor for that.
Hot air balloon.
Yeah. Um, it's also National Peach Day or something like that, some, some fruit as well, but uh, we'll stick with the officers. All right, public session, three minutes or less, please identify yourself for the public record and is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight to the Alderman? Second call, anyone from the public? Third and final call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to the public official session. Uh, Mayor Kasey.
Good evening, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. First, I would like to wish my beautiful wife Ina, who celebrated her birthday Friday, and my niece Anna Rodriguez, a wonderful birthday. As you may know, Anna has been with me as an employee of City Hall for the last ten years. Happy birthday to both of you again. I know we had our first winter storm of the season and I wanted to thank Tim Holman and Public Works Department for doing an excellent job of clearing and keeping our streets safe. Thank you also to our residents for clearing your sidewalk and pathways. It's budget season again, and I want my departments to know that I will be looking for savings to pass on to our taxpayers. So let's sharpen our pencil and as always, I am going to look for more efficient ways to run things to keep taxes stable. This is normally a slow time after the holidays, but I want you to know we are very busy with our projects and grants. I want to thank my staff for continuing to secure funding for important projects. In the last few months, we have applied for and received almost twenty million dollars to move our projects forward. It's an amazing accomplishment and I appreciate that we are competitive and fighting for this money for our residents. I'll give you a quick update on two of those grants and then Sheila and John will share more about these projects. We just received two grants, one for Olson Drive to remove contaminated soil in the amount of three point eight million dollars, which we thank the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for, and especially Ben Uchandi for having the confidence in us to move our sites forward. We also received an additional two hundred thousand for assessment funds for Ansonia Copper and Brass, which will help with continued characterization of the buildings as we look forward towards demolition. We have been and continue to be extremely competitive with grants because I firmly believe this is taxpayer money and it is intended to be used for grant programs. Then the money should be, that money should be coming back to Ansonia. Finally, I want to mention two events coming up. Our annual punch key eating contest is coming up on February thirteenth. This year's competition is shaping up to be spectacular. So Josh, time to start training. And Chicago and Joe, maybe you should trade in them swimsuits for donuts. Looking forward to that. This Saturday. This Saturday at twelve thirty, Spectre Furniture will be celebrating a hundred and thirty-four years on Main Street in Ansonia. We congratulate and thank Howie and Kenny and the Spectre family for being great partners, friends and amazing, amazing members of our business community. That's it for all. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up, Corporation Council, John Marini.
All right, Mr. President, members of the board. We're obviously looking for maximum participation in this punch key eating contest. So we're expecting all fourteen members to be around, uh, the table for this next time. All right, so guys, step up. Uh, first I want to give an update on, uh, the exploration of, uh, potential sale of our Water Pollution Control Authority. As you're well aware, this board has authorized, uh, staff to take the necessary steps to explore a sale. Uh, my last update was that we were waiting on publishing a RFQ, a bid. Um, but we were waiting on the appraisal of the facility as that was a necessary prerequisite. Well, since our last meeting, the appraisal has been finalized, has been made public and the bid has also gone out. So of course those materials are there for your review, for this board's review, and of course any member of the public's review, a thorough appraisal of the WPCA and estimations of values at different points, um, uh, of large variable, of course, and any valuation of the WPCA is the, um, you know, the, the, the fees, the level of fees currently, uh, set by the Water Pollution Control Authority. Um, and the appraisal goes into depth, talking about different methods of valuation, uh, range. Um, and of course that's for review and it was going to be vital to any future discussion on this topic. With respect to the request for qualifications that has gone out, that bid solicitation, um, that is up on the sixteenth of this month. So no responses have yet been received, although walkthrough at the plant has occurred uh, and at least one bidder participated in that walkthrough. Like to give a big thanks to Jason St. Jacques, our, uh, our administrator of the WPCA and supervisor who conducted that walkthrough and of course the staff were facilitating that. Um, Alderman, uh, Chicago Rivers was also present at the beginning of that walkthrough that took several hours, actually about half a day. Um, the next step here is going to be, of course, receiving responses that will be on the sixteenth. And then before any action is taken, of course, those action, those responses will go directly to this Board of Aldermen and will be made public. It will be up to this board to select one or none of, of those responses of those bidders to continue the process with. The board will need to select a bidder to commence a negotiation process to go further in the exploration of any sale. Uh, and that is something that is, um, that is solely with this board to decide on, based on any responses, if any, to that RFQ. And so that is likely going to be a topic of conversation at our next Board of Alderman meeting. In the meantime, you could look forward to any responses received on the sixteenth being published publicly and being made directly available to this board. We will send that along by email. Um, and again, that's the sixteenth of this month. Also, I want to note for the public's interest, before any decision is made, uh, any vote is made to do anything with respect to, um, a disposition of the WPCA, if it even goes that far. Another public hearing will need to be held, a public hearing required by state statute, which will need to be noted several times in the newspaper.
It'll be on Zoom, which isn't public.
That will need to be, um, noticed in the, um, on the property itself within, within a certain amount of days prior to any vote on any sale, it will need to be, will need to occur. So again, we're talking about things that are, you know, in the future, this is all contingent on us even moving forward in the process with the negotiation. And it's of course contingent on even coming up with any acceptable arrangement for a sale. And I think we're a long way from there. Uh, but of course the public will have an opportunity to weigh in at any regular meeting of this Board of Aldermen. And if it goes far enough, at a specially designated and advertised public hearing. So that's WPCA exploration of the sale. Uh, moving on, bonding is a very big project and a very important project. Again, big thanks to this board for pushing these bonding projects along and of course to the public for approving them. Um, we've put up, uh, in terms of priority, uh, the ordering of our fire vehicles first and foremost. Thanks to this board for getting that done at our last meeting and since then, you may have seen on social media and on our website, um, that those vehicles have been ordered and it's going to take some time for those vehicles, um, for those orders to be delivered upon, um, two years or more. Um, so of course very positive that we've already put that in motion. Um, next we're going to be looking at plans for the middle school. Uh, Dr. Schur is putting together a, uh, meeting of the school building committee, um, to begin talking about next steps there. Uh, we're going to be talking about putting a bid together for surveillance cameras. Of course, that's been talked a lot in the past. Putting together a citywide surveillance program to supplement the amazing work that our officers, police officers do and help bolster security all throughout town. Um, work on plans for our new animal shelter will be moving forward and that's really going to begin with our architects and engineers, putting a plan together in cooperation and in communication with Genie, our animal, um, uh, animal officer. Uh, our animal control officer, who of course has been advocating, uh, for quite some time for these improvements. And we hope to deliver something that delivers everything and more, um, that Genie um, has been looking for and that the city is, uh, in, in the city deserves and our, and our animals deserve. Of course, we're looking, uh, uh, have a big eye out for our emergency equipment, including radios, right? For both, um, police and fire and all our emergency services. This will be a, uh, first priority to ensure that, that we get those items done. Um, and of course trucks and vehicles for other departments will soon follow. As Kurt Miller has discussed in the past, some of these items will of course be subject to bonding. Others, we will pursue alternative sources, whether they be through the city budget, whether they be through private placement, um, another form of borrowing that is not bonding. Um, essentially we're looking to solutions that mitigate the impact on our taxpayers. So we're choosing the most responsible ways possible. We don't want to just plunge ahead and increase debt service with bonding. If there are more responsible ways to do it, whether it be through shorter term loans or directly through budget, we will, um, basically, uh, pursue some of these items in alternative ways. But the largest of the items is of course going to be covered by bonding. Um, that will be the middle school and it will certainly be upgrades to our fields. And to that end, our advisory committee on recreation has already been meeting. The next, uh, scheduled, um, get together will be next week. Those meetings are public for anyone who would like to join in. And their next topic will be discussing, uh, and it'll be a big one. Um, the pros and cons of turfing fields and exactly how turfing, if it goes forward, should be implemented and where it should be implemented. We already had a first success with finding some additional revenue to take care of improvements, finishing improvements at Colony in Abe Stone. I'm very happy to say that those improvements have already been, uh, have, are, are being executed, uh, as we speak. Um, but taking a look at Nelligan and then taking a look at the turfing of fields potentially at Nolan Field and elsewhere are going to be the next big topics for that group. Next up, ordinance committee, we're going to have a need for the ordinance committee to meet. Um, happy to hear, uh, suggestions from the Board of Aldermen and the ordinance committee about potential topics. But one we're definitely going to need to look at is sharpening the toolkit of our building and blight department. Um, in particular, we're looking for enforcement mechanisms for non-compliance with the zoning code. We have such mechanisms enforced with the building code. Um, Rhonda Purini will be on hand for those meetings and we'll be talking about, uh, what we're looking for. And also we'd like to, uh, make some, uh, changes and some updates to our blight code. Um, basically modernizing it with some new developments that have gone on and, uh, making them as competitive as possible, our department for, um, remediating blighted conditions in town, making a, a real difference. And big thanks to Rhonda, to Rich DeCarlo and to Kelly, our blight clerk uh, and all our building officials, Nick Bahoon, everyone else for the difference that they're making in town with blight, with zoning enforcement, with building enforcement. Um, and of course thanks to all the Aldermen and all our staff that have helped, uh, facilitate their work along the way. And finally, Opera House, uh, this has been, this was a project that we discussed a lot last year. Uh, there was some real hope at trying to pursue the exterior, exterior improvements first. I can say that things are looking even more interesting as the state has taken a real interest in helping facilitate not just the exterior, but potentially the interior. So things are actually looking a lot more optimistic, uh, than they did at the beginning of this project. And I can say that we're likely to hear very shortly on some funding from the state for a feasibility study for the total project. And of course feasibility studies aren't just things to sit on shelves and to look pretty. They are in fact keys that open doors to additional funding. Feasibility studies are quite simply put, uh, typically prerequisites to getting funding from a variety of state and federal sources um, to show that the city is serious about this project. Uh, Walt Konjerski, the owner is very serious about looking at all options with us and has been an excellent partner. And of course you know our volunteers on our Opera House Committee, um, including Anthony Mullin and his team, um, have been very cooperative in terms of, um, getting more exposure for our Ansonia Opera House and really getting eyes on that property, uh, that never knew it existed. So again, hopefully we're going to be hearing soon, uh, bit with a very big step with that feasibility study being established. And I think this year we're going to be hearing a lot more about, um, ways to potentially, uh, jumpstart uh, a renovation of that facility in the interest of our entire downtown area. And with that said, um, we have some items on the agenda tonight, uh, in line with what I've talked about, but any questions?
Yeah, we'll pick, we'll pick up the, uh, the one item later in the agenda, um, but any questions for Corporation Council from the Aldermen?
I'd like a date for the ordinance committee.
Yeah, just one comment I was going to throw out there, a date two weeks from tonight, if possible. If everybody that's on the committee can check their schedules, that would be, uh, January twenty-third at seven PM. Um, and maybe a deadline of next Tuesday for items that would be on the agenda, be sent to John or myself.
Great.
Awesome. And Josh, I see you got your, um, you got your dual humbucker, uh, super strats out. I don't know if you're taking requests, but I was hoping tonight for something by, uh, you know, possibly sabotage or, you know, maybe Judas Priest.
Even, I even have my, uh, bass up here.
You do the acoustic version, Josh?
Can you do both? That would be something. We don't want, I, I'm not looking for an acoustic version of anything. Thank you.
Gotta lift up the sign that says no stairway now.
Ja- Josh, just a quick question. The, um, the, uh, any suggestions that we would have for topics to be considered by the ordinance committee should go to you and Joe Jaman?
Uh, John and, and Joe Jaman. Yep.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, John Marini and Joe John.
Yeah. Joe is the chair of that committee. Yep. You could send it directly to John.
And that can just be done by email, I assume, right?
That's fine, Steve.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? John, I'll just point out that you missed a great opportunity for an Ansonia Recharge tie-in. Uh, it's also National Static Electricity Day today. I don't know with recharge.
Wow. Well, let me, let me get a plug in then, uh, something I wasn't going to give an update on, but I, it kind of dovetails with, um, Sheila's update. Um, we are looking at formally restarting our downtown, um, Business Council for the purpose of collaborating on promotional initiatives. And of course a sounding board for our growing, growing, uh, business community. And likely this will be more than just the downtown, um, uh, business owners. But of course that tends to be where we have a colle- a collective need, um, for putting the spotlight, right? On, uh, on, on the ver- variety of offerings in our downtown area. Um, so you're going to hear more about that in the future, but we're looking to get a panel of business owners together. Members of this board, of course, are more than invited and, and very much encouraged to be part of everything that's going to be going on. And our first initiative is likely going to be, um, eyeing a potential, uh, restaurant week or special, uh, weekend to really spotlight our restaurants. Um, but a lot of this is going to be ongoing and, uh, very much in line with where the, that group is going to want to go, being receptive to their interests and their needs.
Great. Thank you.
People would be ecstatic over that, I bet.
Oh, hey, that was good.
Good one.
All right, moving on.
Shockingly astute, shockingly astute comments. For Alderman Mamon.
Shockingly a stooge comment from partner over here.
What about shot, what about we do, uh, Ace Frehler's got a new album, Josh, can you do shock me?
Ten thousand volts, I think it's called.
I heard that, yeah, that's an okay, so it was okay. You can do shock me though, right?
Yeah, I can do, I'll play that afterwards, right after, right in executive session, which we're not having.
Don't you play muddy waters?
All right.
Ah. Ah.
Move on to something more, uh, more important, economic development director, Sheila O'Malley.
Smokestack lighting is what we're going for.
There you go.
Yep.
Thanks, um, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen. You know, you hear me talk about this a lot, but we get a lot of questions from other communities about our grants and, and you know, what, what is, what does it take to be successful in securing funding? And, um, it's, it's, it's really a formula, right? So it's a, it's a, it's the mayor that has the vision, the Board of Aldermen that share that vision. Um, staff members, John and Anna and finance, um, architects and engineers, it's a, it's a big team of, uh, people to put these grants together. We've been really successful. Um, to the point where I've had, uh, you know, agencies call for, for copies of our applications. But I think, uh, one of the most important things aside from all of that is that the state sees and recognizes that we, we see not only secure these grants, but we are spending the money um, as they, as it is intended and that our projects are moving along and we, we wrap them up and go on to the next grant. And that's extremely important in securing, uh, funding for, for whatever project it is. So just wanted to say a little bit about that and may, may, um, may do some workshops with, uh, with respect to grant, make, uh, grant development. Um, let's see, so the state, we are meeting with DOT and I will extend to the, um, fourth and fifth ward Aldermen, if you're interested, we are going to meet with DOT to talk about Franklin Street. They are putting in, the state is putting in a lot of money for the drainage, um, for correcting the drainage issues that have been there, might I say, quite a while um, prior to us even be, being in office. So, um, we will have that meeting next week. I'll share that date and time um, to go over, you know, next steps and what's going to happen with the rest of the street, et cetera. And we had talked about, um, applying for some grant money to do the sidewalks and, um, and ta- and taking that project all the way down to Olson Drive. So we will, um, we'll see what, what DOT says, um, going forward on that. The, um, yes.
I was just going to ask a quick question. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but, um, with that, that, that includes extending the sidewalk on both sides from Nolan all the way down, right? That's the, that's the plan?
Yeah, wherever possible, Joe, our engineers were saying that, um, you know, the difficulty is coming around that bend.
Yeah.
Where a retaining wall would have to be installed or, you know, there's not enough room to, to put the sidewalk, but yeah, wherever possible that, that included the sidewalks, putting in sidewalks.
Okay, thanks.
Um, you're, you're welcome. The, um, the Riverwalk, we are out to bid for consultants for the design of the Riverwalk. However, there's another opportunity to get additional money. What, what we currently have might not be enough for the one point seven miles of Riverwalk we're planning on, um, constructing. So, uh, while we, while we go out to bid, we are, um, probably going to simultaneously apply for additional funding for that design, which if you recall is going to go alongside, um, Riverside Drive and extend out to Nolan. Uh, let's see. I think, um, oh, the, um, Olson Drive project, those pile, those piles of dirt need to be carted away and carting that stuff away is very, very costly. Um, dug up about, you know, uh, dug up about two million dollars worth of, of soil. Um, with an additional million dollars for footings and, uh, ev- everything else that needs to be done from an environmental perspective. Um, so we are working with the developers on, um, getting rid of that soil and moving forward with the construction of the field and the first building. You, which you will see a lot more activity coming up. I know Alderman Mamon will be asking me about that, so. Coming up in two weeks, Tony.
Gotcha Sheila, I got you.
All right, and I think, um, I think that's it for now, um. Lot of interesting things on the horizon. I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions from the Aldermen?
Uh, just. Uh, yes, I have one, um.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we have an update on that, uh, property at the end of, uh, Wakeley Avenue, um, getting off the highway? I see them, um, they did a lot of outside work to it, but I haven't seen like no gas pumps or anything, um, uh, going in over there.
Yep, that's a good question. I don't have an update, but I can get one for you, Alderman Rivers.
Okay.
Um, yep, that's a good question.
Sheila, uh, just one other question, um.
Yes.
The, uh, regarding those, uh, that, uh, soil removal remediation at the Olson Drive site. Um, the, the city recently received a two point eight million grant.
Three.
Grant from the state.
Three point eight.
Three point eight for that purpose, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is, is that being paid for by the state grant?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not work that the developer is doing?
Or, or it's not, it's, it's actually, it's actually, um, the state, the city is going to administer the grant and oversee it. Um, no, no cost to the city. It's, it's all, uh, grant funds.
All right, so, so after that state grant remediates the site, then the developer can begin working?
Actually, he's going to begin, um, somewhat simultaneously. So while, while the piles are being removed, he can also begin, um, or has already begun clearing and, uh, laying the foundation.
Okay, but that, that is the designation for that state, uh, state grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila, just a comment to be, uh, I guess tracked down based on your, your track record and your success speaks volumes to not only what you do for the city, you know, I guess, but for each and every resident that, you know, I, I guess that lives in the city and is able to feel some of the success that you've brought to the city. So, you know, I just want to, from the bottom of my heart, from every resident, just thank you for the work that you do. It's tireless, sometimes it's thankless, but you're. Fireless, sometimes it's thankless, but you're amazing at what you do and we appreciate you.
Right back at this board. Thank you, Tony. I appreciate that. Got it. I got a good, good colleagues and, and a good mayor and good board. And that's everything.
Tony, I'd like to second that. I'd like to say something about that too, Sheila. Worth her weight in gold, chief. Awesome. Thanks, Sheila.
Thank, thank you. I can't help but somewhat feel like there's something coming around the corner, guys, but I appreciate, I appreciate that. Appreciate those accolades.
Look at the guy behind you, Sheila.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila shockingly forgot.
I'm waiting for the pictures. I'm waiting for the pictures.
All right, so yeah, guys, we have a surprise for you. We have. We have an unveiling of a project that's going on in the city. So this is very near to City Hall. It is a private project and we think it's going to cause some interest in the downtown area. Oh, what happened here? Oh, Josh, that's a real guitar.
I don't have anything to say about that.
All right, here's our first, first look. What's this, Sheila?
Right, so that's the, that's the alleyway between the, between City Hall and the. What was, what used to be the Sentinel Building where the, where the newspaper was. And that is going to be the new home of a brewery. We had talked about that. And I guess the brewery is going to be called The Broken Symmetry. Broken Symmetry at the Sentinel. They're going to, they're gonna, they're gonna take up 2,500 square feet of space on the second floor. There's going to be an elevator in the back of the building. The garage that's in the back is going to be torn down and replaced with additional space. There will be a rooftop. A rooftop bar and amenities. For additional space for the brewery and taproom and restaurant. And. Let's see, what else am I, what am I not, not seeing? The engineering, the architectural firm will move up to the third floor. And the brewery will take the rest of the space, second floor and a first floor. In addition to building up the alleyway in between, as you can see, and I think there's another. Picture that.
There's the, this, this one here and the one that I showed.
There's one that shows the front of it, but I won't talk about capacity because we're not sure how. Maybe not.
I just have to. So this is of course named after the Evening Sentinel, which is the. The publication that used to exist in this building, and I think we actually have a representative from the, the Valley Independent Sentinel. Here tonight, and of course, that also took its name from the Evening Sentinel. That was a fixture in the valley area for so long until it went out of business tragically. But this is doing its best to preserve the history of the Sentinel and at the same time, hopefully adding a major attraction to the downtown area.
Yeah, I think it's exciting, a town with a restaurant and a bar.
So if, if you're looking at the City Hall, this is to the left of it, correct?
Yes, right to the left.
Yeah. Have.
Yeah.
You have that other picture, John?
Let me, hold on.
I know exactly.
Two photos here.
To the left of where the.
I don't have a third photo.
Place was.
No, just two.
I only have two.
See this a while ago?
We only see one, right?
You showed us this a while ago.
You saw two, right?
No, one.
Only one.
Do you know, do you know the realtor?
Yeah, there it is.
This one and.
Do I know?
Yep. The realtor that worked on this project or the space that was released?
Um, no, AEPMI, which is an architectural firm. Mike Marsonik bought the building next to City Hall and he, he's doing it along with his partners. And they, they are putting this project together with the, with the brewery people.
Beautiful.
Nice, beautiful.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's exciting. And they're cleaning out a lot of the stuff. They, they had some interior demolition to do, but most of it is just. I, I guess there's an unbelievable amount of stuff stored in that building that they're moving out, so.
Yeah, I only asked because I had a friend or family reach out to me about this piece of property.
Yep.
Four or five months ago.
Okay, yeah.
Advised Realty.
Do we have the right, are you, are you? Are we talking about the same building? Because this was sold, you know, quite a couple of years ago.
Uh, maybe not.
No, I don't think so. Mario, I think, I think you might, might be talking about a different property.
I might be wrong, yeah.
But we can talk about it on Main Street, yeah.
It looks like a Nashville with the, with the alleyway and the rooftop bar. Looks like Nashville.
It'll be nice.
That's.
John and I have agreed to play some Nash, some country music on acoustic guitar in the alleyway.
I, I don't think, I don't think you agreed to that. I don't, I don't think so.
That would, that would be a great place for jazz. That's all I can say.
Well.
Jazz.
You'll hear a lot, you'll hear a lot.
You see, but I'm sure, do you see the, the photo I have out?
Yeah, yeah.
That building right there.
Right, right here.
Okay, yeah, that's, I don't think that's the one on.
No, I don't think so either. Yeah, I don't think so either.
Okay, great, that's awesome.
All right.
Can we get a skybridge into City Hall somehow?
You know, they talked about that a long time ago. There was a, a hope that the city would have purchased it and. Built a skybridge and I don't know, but it didn't work out, so.
Maybe a zip line.
The mayor did mention extending lunch from 12 to 4:30 once it opens.
Okay.
Any other question?
We congratulate Zoo Parties for making pizza places?
Uh, good, good one, John. Yeah, Connecticut's Best, Connecticut Best of Magazine. Zoo Parties was named, but you know, one of best, best pizzas in Connecticut.
I think there were like eight pizza places, not that many. It was like maybe eight to 10 pizza places and.
Right.
Awesome. It's one of the pizza places mentioned.
Yeah, I get Connecticut Magazine. I think they were ranked third, which is remarkable.
Right, thanks, Steve. Yep.
All right, any last minute questions for economic development? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll move on now to Police Chief Wayne Williams, who's been waiting patiently. Thank you for coming.
Yes, listening intently. Good, good evening, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen. I'm just going to give you a quick personnel update. We currently have one officer that's in the police academy. We have no officers that are in field training right now. We currently have five open positions. We have another position opening in February. So we are working on recruiting. Right now, we do not have any candidates in the testing phases. I'm going to do a cheap plug here. If anybody knows a friend, family member, a resident. That would be interested, they can go to policeapp.com, that's policeapp.com to apply and just click on the Ansonia one, not the other departments, just Ansonia. There's also a flyer on our police department webpage in case anybody you know is interested and go there and get some more information. Or they can just call us and we'll talk to them. We also have an open dispatcher position that we are finalizing a candidate for hire right now, so that hopefully will be filled shortly. We are still working on filling the SRO position at the middle school. Superintendent DeBaco and I met this week. And we came up with a selection process and a timetable, so no final start date's been set, but we're working on it together. The snowstorm had an impact on the community, but luckily we were spared a large amount of snow. The majority of the residents complied with the winter parking regulations. We additionally had officers assigned before the snowstorm. The targeted vehicles that were either unregistered and disabled around town. We tagged dozens of vehicles and most of them got moved off the street voluntarily. We did tow some with local garages, but that helped wind out the roads for Public Works. I've talked about speeding and traffic enforcement last month. We are in phase three of the grant that we're in. It's a 10-phase grant, so we'll be adding those extra patrols this week, starting this week. I also applied for a $60,000 grant for speed enforcement and equipment purchases. The grant was submitted the end of December. That'll help us purchase four new radar and lidar devices, no cost to the city, so we were able to eliminate that from budget contention. Plus, it also feeds the overtime cost to add additional speed enforcement controls on top of what we're already putting out there for the other grant. We also had a distracted driving grant that we've been working on. Due to manpower shortages and needing to fill patrol shifts first, we weren't able to fill as many of them as we wanted to, the slots. However, just so you know, in 2022, we had 24 arrests for DUI in town. And in 2023, we had 56 total arrests, which is 133% increase. So I want to give credit to the patrol division trying to take these parties off the street before accidents occur. Those DUI patrols could be continuing over the next few months. Working on the year-end stats. But I would just let you know, we did respond to 19,645 calls for service, which is an 11% increase over 2022. We're still deep diving into that. My budget for 2425 has been submitted and I definitely look forward to the budget process. The, lastly, I, I won't go into any of the training stuff, but lastly. Before the board tonight, communications is an outside vendor contract regarding private duty scheduling billing, and I'll talk more about that when it comes up. If there's any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Any questions?
Josh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, on the news the other night. There was something about DOT actually. Awarding two cameras to every one of the lower income towns and five are going to some of the other towns. And it talks about it's at no cost. It's for speeders and red light and it's the camera system that'll send out the tickets to who it's registered. And I don't know if it's going to come through you guys or through the city. It says that the city or will meet with DOT to figure out where those two will get placed. Have, have we heard anything on that yet? Have you heard of that?
I can tell you that I'm aware that the law was passed in the last legislative session. And that DOT was working on it. I have not gotten any communication from that. I think they initially were starting with a couple of towns to basically work out the case because it's not in Connecticut anywhere. So they're just starting that. So I know there were a couple of towns that were basically beta testing that they were approving it in. Initially, they were only just approving for those towns, but I think they added some language at the end in one of the bills. So I have not gotten anything. I don't know if it's going to come through the city. Obviously, we'll keep an eye on it. The state's pretty good about sending me emails. I get dozens of them a day. So I'll, I'll keep an eye out for that. And I, and there's a lot, you know, there's a lot more to that project than just throwing a camera up and sending a ticket out. I'm really not sure how they're, how they're working that. I'm not sure if it falls on the city. To implement it and put up the cameras. I know they say that if they, and I, again, I haven't seen any of it, but if they're saying they'll pay for the cameras. You know, paying for the cameras is probably about one tenth of, of what it will probably cost to implement the program. And I know you have to have, there are restrictions. You have to have data on accidents. There's, there's a lot that goes into it. So if I hear anything about it being offered to Ansonia, we obviously will take a look at it, but we want to make sure that it's right for, for our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have one, Josh.
Yep.
Chief, the speed limit sign, the solar powered one, I believe it is, on Wakeley Avenue. Yeah, it's not working.
Yeah, we, we noticed it's been down for a little bit. We're trying to figure out what's wrong with it. That's one that was supplied by the state. So Lieutenant Lynch is aware of it, but we got caught up in the holidays and then prepping for the storm. So as soon as he can get out there, we're either going to take it down or see if we can manually fix it. If not, we'll have to talk to the state and see if there's any warranty on it. It may just be a simple fix of a wire or something.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I hated to go, I hated to go outside my ward. It should really be up to Chicago, but I figured I'd take over for.
Hey, Bobby. Yeah.
We're definitely aware of it.
There is also another one on Ford Street.
Yes.
Next to Mead School. Yeah, that one's not currently working either.
Oh, all right. That one I didn't know wasn't working. We put up the two. These came from the state. Maybe they only had like a six-month lifespan. It is a state project. But I.
Just a heads up now that you guys mentioned it.
Yeah, I will have him go up and take a look at it tomorrow. If both of them are out, maybe it's a fix that we have to do where they just need to be reset for the new year or something along those lines, but we'll figure it out.
If anybody tells you I've been tampering with them or disabling them, I deny it.
All right, any, any other comments or questions? All right, we'll come back to you later in the agenda, chief. Yes. All right, next up Superintendent Schools, Dr. Joseph DeBaco. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, President Schuer and Board of Aldermen. I would like to give you a couple of updates. First one, I wish everyone a happy new year, but I'll give you a couple of updates. I did attend the grand opening of Griffin Hospital's newest teaching location, which is in Nogatuck. I was there and, and I was speaking to everyone at Griffin. Right now, we presently have our allied health program. Where our students are trained over there on Seymour Avenue in, right there at Griffin Hospital. But now this Nogatuck location adds more classes and more courses that our students are able to take. So going over there, hopefully can, will expand our allied health programs and offerings. And I'm very thankful to Griffin Hospital for that opportunity. I did attend the retirement party for a gentleman named George Mitchell, Ansonia High School alum. But Vice President Derek Sikorski, he unwittingly agreed and volunteered to be the chair of our first. Ansonia School Business Council. He will run it with other business leaders to help with internships, help with programs and, and help with. Maybe getting our, our students into jobs, into placements that otherwise were not accessible, but. Once again, he has volunteered. I did host a walkthrough at Mead School with ACES. We had a combined ACES Mead program. Where students, it's a more fluid program for special ed and regular ed. And we had two districts that I walked through. One is West Haven, the other one is Greenwich. And they were interested in that program and hopefully we can get some of their students. To pay tuition to our program and can help save us some money. That, that is the, the big hope. So once again, hustling in that area. I do want to share with the Aldermen that we were the only district in the valley, Nogatuck Valley. Health District provided us a plaque and also provide. They provided training in regards to suicide prevention. We are the only district in the valley that conducted all the suicide prevention training necessary. And they acknowledged our, our efforts at Ansonia Public Schools and I think our school district should be. You know, all the staff should be supported and applauded for taking on that, on that effort. I did want to thank Public Works and our custodians. We had a delay at our schools, but it was not because the roads weren't clear and it was not because our schools weren't, our parking lots weren't clear. The, the truly and usually, superintendents, we move in tandem. The valley will always do things together. That's normally how things operate. I'm not saying they did operate that way, but what happens when one district. Chooses to go off script and, and once where my teachers live and they have two-hour delays. Either they call in sick and I don't open up the doors or I, I have a delay as well. Mostly Derby, he, off. Doc Conway and I, we, we, we work in lockstep. He's been very good. We have some other districts that are just outliers. They remain nameless, of course, public session. But I am just wanted to let you know that it wasn't because of the hard work of our public works or our custodians. They did. So I, I just do want to let everyone know that it was due to the fact that we needed teachers in our classrooms and when. It was due to the fact that we needed teachers in our classrooms, and when you have two-hour delays in the surrounding areas. Um, it really forces your hand. Uh, I do, I do hear that we're going to have another weather event. I'm not sure. They said it too early to tell, but I have an assistant superintendent who loves this weather stuff. And he keeps telling me that Wednesday of next week, I I need to uh be ready, but. Once again, um wishing everyone a happy new year. If I have any questions, if I can help answer any questions, I'm here. And willing to answer any questions anyone has.
Yeah, I got one. Um, I just want uh uh say um, happy new year and I. You're doing some good work down there and um. The report that you sent out was just nice. It was, it was plain, it was clear, it was easy to understand.
The annual report, you guys, you were received it. I'm I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Any other uh comments or questions for the superintendent? All right, well, a- as always, thank you for coming to our meeting. We appreciate it.
Abs- absolutely.
All right, so ends the uh public official session. We'll move on. Um, financial reports, the finance committee, Tony, hit it.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Nutt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, secondly, we have the boat recommendations. Uh, the the report um. Was, came out after the packet, but but uh you did receive that, the municipal report. Motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second.
By Rivers, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Josh, Josh, can I abstain? I need to get a chance to review it, so.
Sure, uh. Uh, all in favor, one abstention, Mamon. Motion carries. All right, let's see here. Uh, where's the request for refunds is the next piece. In the amount of six thousand ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents, if found to be correct.
So move.
Second.
Hammon and second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, uh, that passes. And we'll move on to uh monthly reports. That's everything else that was not included there. I and I want to, as always. Uh, extend my appreciation to those department heads who submit reports to us. We do look at them, we do read them. Um, and I'm just seeking a motion to accept all those uh remaining reports and place those on file.
So move.
Second.
Uh, Adamowski, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, under accidents and claims, we had one, uh twelve thirty-one, ten fifty. Uh, Berstein, Berstein and Berstein. Sorry, uh versus City of Ansonia.
Second.
Uh, motion by Duranty, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll send that on to council. Uh, we have nothing under communications this month. We have no resignations. Uh, under resolution, you had one resolution, resolution number one. This is the uh, we do this every year, it seems. I think it's every year. The license permit for the ice cream truck, this is the one, one dollar.
Um, yeah.
Ice cream truck um license pending insurance.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve by Rivers, and who was the seconder?
Different Bobby.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
Second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they're abstaining. All right, uh, we have no appointments. And next up, we have a special presentation, Key to the City. Uh, and I s- I think our honoree might be here.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so um. Tonight's Key to the City uh awardee is Ansonia resident, uh Dina Koniker. And uh, I put together a brief little blip. Um, so we've had honorees like General Muffler.
Okay.
Been uh staples of our city for over seventy years, and tonight we have a fresher face, someone who's newer to Ansonia. Now entering her fourth year living here, and I, and uh, want to add that if you own a car or you ever drive around town. Or even step outside, uh, you've seen Dina. She can frequently be found throughout our city picking up litter. Um, she was born and raised in Milford, Connecticut, and currently works as a teacher's aide. At Happy Day Preschool and Daycare Center. Um. She, her grandparents owned twelve acres of land that they farmed with vegetables, and this was known as Aldo's Farm in Milford. Uh, where she and her siblings were expected to help out growing up, and at one point, uh, her brother actually took over the farm. And it was here where she developed her love of being outdoors and her work ethic. As well as her appreciation for the na- for nature, the earth and uh wildlife. Um, Dina started doing some trash pickup on her own. Uh, on her way home from walks as far back as twenty sixteen, and she arrived in Ansonia in twenty twenty-one and said on her walks with a friend. That she couldn't help but notice how much garbage was in the parking lot at Emmett O'Brien. Um, she was walking, and she instinctively started cleaning up the parking lot and around the track. Uh, and then she expanded her walking radius. Uh, and started noticing the rubbish wherever she went. So one day she had enough, and she decided she was gonna buy all the supplies she needed. And start to carry a garbage bag every time she went out walking. Um, and so began her mission to better our community, one bag at a time. She can be seen practically every day somewhere, and when I asked her what drove her and being consistent and going out. Uh, she said this, I'm just gonna read a quote that um of something she said, which I thought was kind of uh amazing. She says, we're the only animals on this planet that make trash, and we make too much, and we can't even put it where it belongs to keep it contained. To make the earth beautiful again. Never mind the damage it does to the wildlife and getting into all the water sources. Um, she says she feels good doing it, satisfying to know she might be making a small difference, and most importantly, making our community look better. And she also noted that it's a free workout. Um, I saw Dina down the street this weekend, uh, cleaning up, and I stopped to tell her that she was being honored tonight. And I could instantly tell by her emotional reaction, uh, that she was surprised, appreciative, and genuinely touched that people have noticed. And we'll just say that people do notice, and several people uh over the months have suggested that we, that we do something to formally recognize her. So congratulations, uh, Dana. You are this month's recipient of an Ansonia Key to the City. We are the recipient of your uh selfless acts on a daily basis, and I'll note that this key opens. Everything, including the vault at City Hall.
It does.
It even opens the mayor's office. So enjoy, um, and thank you. We'll coordinate soon to have you come into City Hall to pick up your key and to meet with the mayor. So uh, congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's enjoying what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Well, I'm glad everyone noticed. Yes, thank you.
Um, all right.
I'm not much for a fan.
Um, all right, moving on. Uh, next up, we have uh ordinances. We have nothing. Actually, we do, uh, Joe. Um.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll repeat the dates if you want, Josh.
Yeah, please.
But plan on having the meeting on January twenty-third at seven P M. Um, any submissions for ideas, uh, potential additional ordinances that they want on the agenda to discuss? Please get them to me or John by Tuesday, January sixteenth, so we can put the agenda together.
Okay, great. And then sort of related to that is the uh new business number one. Consideration of a new ordinance, uh, work without zoning permit penalty. John, do you want to comment on that? He started to talk about it earlier in his update.
Um, that's, I I think we can wait until we uh discuss this at the ordinance committee.
Okay, so we have a date, and uh that will be one of the items, and then anything else, just get to Joe or John. Perfect. Um. Second, uh, item, approval of contract scheduling of private duty for Ansonia Police Department. Um, you receive this um as a communication from uh the chief, and the chief is here, so I'm gonna kick it back to him. For any explanation or uh follow-up.
So uh, President, I I just want to make sure, did you get a letter that accompanied that con- the contract was probably about ten pages? There was a letter. That I I put on to kind of help explain it. Um, I'll generically give you some information. Um. As I mentioned in that letter, um, that accompanied the contract, we've been exploring the idea of having scheduling and billing. Of our private duty moved to an outside vendor. Uh, for those who don't understand, private duty is what we refer to as uh traffic direction details, sporting events, et cetera. Where officers are hired to do the traffic or or work security at the sporting events, and the city is. Pays the officer, but then is reimbursed by uh the uh vendor. Uh, scheduling currently is done by shift supervisors, and it tends to take up a lot of their time, especially if multiple jobs are coming in to be scheduled. Um, there's stuff that takes away from their supervisory tasks. The invoi- the invoicing, billing, and accounts receivable are all private, for all private duty is done by our staff as well. It's common for the city to have paid officers for their work, um, because they are paid in their next paycheck. Um, and not being reimbursed for thirty to sixty days or even longer if it's a state-sponsored job. Um, for example, we currently have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in outstanding invoices where officers are. Paid, but the city has not been paid yet. Now, the vast majority of our vendors do eventually pay their bills, um, but we have had companies that either go out of business or move out of state. Uh, or refuse to pay their bills, and we either have to take legal action, or if they've already disbanded, we have, the city just uh. Is held responsible for those fees. Uh, this contract uh with an outside vendor would put all the scheduling and billing responsibilities on the vendor themselves. The officers would still be paid by the city, and the city would be immediately reimbursed. Uh, the cost of the job, including the administrative costs that we charge. Uh, this will be done at no cost to the city whatsoever. A presentation has been done to the police administration, a demonstration was done to the union, another demonstration was done to the finance department. We were all in agreement, so win-win for the city. We are already dealing with the vendor that we selected, which is Extra Duty Solutions. They handle private duty for the Nogatuck Police Department amongst over two hundred other departments in twenty-three states. And we already have a mutual agreed aid agreement with, for private duty with several towns, including Nogatuck, so we have contact with Extra Duty Solutions regularly. Additionally, we have an added bonus uh of having past chief of police, Andrew Cota, as a contact person to Extra Duty Solutions. Chief Cota spent over twenty-five years with this agency before retiring. He's also an Ansonia resident, so his loyalties are clearly to this department and the city. Uh, while he is just an employee at Extra Duty Solutions, it's good to have a contact person there. Who cares about our city and our department in case we had some questions or there were some issues that arose. Um, Extra Duty Solutions is the largest private duty scheduling company. Uh, and is a national company, as I said, they're in twenty-three states. Um, they schedule private duty for towns smaller than ours and for for major cities with over two thousand officers. So they can obviously handle what we give them. I'm asking the Board of Aldermen to approve the contract and authorize me to sign the agreement. Um, as I, as I noted, and it's in the contract, um, if there are any operational issues, which I don't think there will be, but in case they pop up. Um, we have the ability to cancel this uh agreement with them uh and giving them thirty days' notice. There's no repercussions against the city. So we really have nothing to lose. But any questions that you might have?
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple, chief. So wh- what's the, I guess maybe the line item, how big is the private duty? Budget collection line item that we get, like, what does it look like annually?
So, huh, I wish I could tell you that annually, but uh it changes every year. We start off with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that line. And then what happens is as we use all of that money. Then we, the the money comes in from the vendor, but that ends up going into the general fund. So when the the two hundred and fifty has been expired, you know, as it's been used, then we increase the. The revenue and the expense sides of the budget. Um, so like, for example, in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, twenty-two, twenty-three was about four twenty-four. Um, and this year we're at about hmm two ninety-ish um towards the end of the year.
Okay, I did notice in the contract for, I guess, the private duty billing and collection. Uh, they were charging about a seven and a half percent, um. You know.
They, they charge, so what happens when we bill? Just so you understand, we send out, an officer gets an hourly rate, but that money that the officer is paid is also. Um, a uh. What do you call it? Not FICA, yeah, FICA, and it's also MERS-dependent, so. There's money that pull, that uh the city is responsible for, for MERS. We uh, we already add that cost to the vendors. So we have a administrative cost, which is about thirty percent, just under thirty percent, to cover any extras. So that the city does not have any liability when, or doesn't have any cost uh in the private duty world.
I- is that gonna cover, because if you're saying, you know, between two fifty and four twenty-four, you're looking at an annual fee on this. Eight and a half percent, which is the extra percentage, the one percent for the scheduling. You're looking at anywhere between twenty-one to, you know, little over thirty-six thousand. Of of a, of a net.
Right, so hold, hold on, so, so just so you understand, what we bill and the same for them, none of our billing will change. The thirty percent administrative fee that we currently have will still be added to the. To the, what they reimburse the city. So basically, every pay period, they would send over a spreadsheet that says. Here's the number of hours each officer worked that you have to pay them for, and here's a check to cover all of those hours. Plus all of your administrative costs. They pay us upfront. We don't have to wait for, for payments to come in. So they'll pay us upfront. The seven and a half percent is their fee for doing all of this. Again, that's pass on to the vendor. It has nothing to, like, we don't have to pay anything for that. Where you're saying, showing that it says eight and a half percent, if we use the scheduling. On a separate phase, which we haven't even approached yet. They also have a on-duty scheduling system, so we currently. Have a separate vendor that does our on-duty um scheduling, meaning all of our, how our schedule is run, private duty, how you put in for time off, et cetera. Is all online. We have an outside vendor who handles all of that, that the city pays. What Extra Duty Solutions offers is if we take their private duty. Um, scheduling where they charge the seven and a half percent. If we want, and it's voluntary, if we want, we can also take their on-duty scheduling. And they will give it to us for free and add a percent to the outside vendors. Meaning that we then would stop using the current vendor we have for on-duty, and we would not have to pay that bill anymore. So that could be us, a a be- another benefit, but I didn't want to add that in there because I want to make sure that this first part works for us.
Hmm.
Right, so coming in, John, I might need some help with the verbiage in the, in the contract, because, because I think. Think essentially what this is saying is, you know, if they're gonna hypothetically bill out ten thousand dollars, they're gonna essentially shave. No, they'll collect the ten thousand, but they're gonna give us the ten thousand, net the seven and a half percent removed.
No.
That's their fee.
No, they're gonna add the seven and a half percent on.
Correct, correct. They're gonna add their fee on the top. We will still get the ten thousand dollars that we would have gotten.
So in, in the contract here, it says that the company shall charge the customer. Who's the customer in this case?
We are the client. A customer is the, let's say, a construction company.
It's the end user.
The, yeah, that, we are, we are the client. The customer will be the um, you know, whether it's the, the. UI or Eversource or whoever.
They're gonna, they're gonna bake that in upfront whenever someone comes and says, hey, I need two officers. They're gonna include that seven and a half percent upfront, so.
Correct.
All right.
Instead of it being thirty percent, it'll be thirty-seven point five percent.
Yeah, it's not net, it's in addition to.
Yeah, just so you know, I also have already worked it out with them. Where um, some of these events that we do, and there's only a few, are through the Board of Education. They have agreed for those types of jobs where that's still technically city money. Um, they will waive their uh, their fee.
The contract doesn't have a cost, but it has a value, and that's important to understand, which is why it does need to be approved by this board. It's not a, it's not enough to say, hey, there's no, you know, no cost. There's a, there's a value, so there's a significance in awarding, of course, a contract and.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, i- it needs to run through channels through this board.
Yeah, and well, I think if you also looked at the hours that the officers are spending, you know, those salary dollars that they're putting into this. You know, these, these guys are, you know, they're law enforcement. They're not, you you know, accounts receivable, you know, they're not out there collecting the debt, so to speak, so. Uh, I'm not sure where that lives in the city, but if that's something on the police department to ensure that gets billed out and everything else, and you're shaking, yes, chief, but.
It's a hundred percent, it's a hundred percent at the police department. It's a hundred percent. It's a hundred percent at the police department.
Yeah, you, you guys have no business being in the.
And I, and that right now, my administrative assistant is one of the ones that chasing all these companies to pay their bills. And, and like I said, the majorities are major vendors, but what happens with, and, and Sheila, you know, we went through this with that Plasky Highway project. Some of those construction companies that are doing state projects, they wait till the state pays them before they pay our bill. So it can be passed down the road a little bit.
So kind of a set, last question I had, and then I'll, I'll free it up. You said there's about a hundred and fifty thousand of outstanding debt that's there for the receivable. What's, what's the age of some of that chief?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that the majority of it, thirty, sixty days, especially with the holiday. So Dawn's pretty good about calling these companies and rebuilding them. And sometimes there's errors that, you know, uh, we work for Eversource, but it was supposed to be billed to this one. So it's just sometimes a matter of billing. But on average, on average, we probably have, that's probably pretty good about how long, you know, money, you know, is owed to us. Um, but like I said, the majority of it is paid.
And our officers have been paid already. This was, you know, essentially.
Right. This is.
Money that we're holding.
Floating the money.
Yep, got you.
Basically, you know, we're floating the money. Whereas if we go with an outside vendor, they float.
Right.
I, I trust me, I had a, I had long conversations with finance and then Richie actually sat down with the, the company. Um, and, you know, he was definitely on board after, uh, after they did their presentation.
Yeah, this, this sounds like a win-win for sure.
I, I agree.
Thanks, chief.
Any other comments or questions?
Josh, I do. Go ahead. I have a couple of questions for the chief. One, uh, will our officers be scheduled first for a job? I know there's agreements with other departments, Seymour, Nogatuck, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. So we have, um, mutually aid agreements, but those agreements only come into play when we can't fill our jobs. There are times where we all have, you know, I have five or six officers available and we have ten jobs come in. So we'll fill ours and then it goes to the, uh, to the other towns. And the same works in their town. They fill on with their available people and then they contact us.
Very good. I had one more question also. Is a, uh, I want to say trained or licensed flagging company allowed to come in and work in our city at any of these jobs?
Yeah, that is a great question. The answer is yes. And that's a conversation that will be taking place both with myself and Attorney Marinian, maybe the ordinance committee. Because the answer is yes. Um, but I have serious concerns when it comes to especially main roads of traffic through the city. Um, because I'm not sure that that's what we really want as a municipality. But, uh, yes, but, but I will tell you that the majority of companies don't do that. But, um, some of the other companies do, some smaller companies do do that. But, uh, right now, the way our ordinances are set up, that is allowed.
Right. I, that's what I wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that it is allowed right now. The ordinance would have to be changed, but, uh.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Was there one other question from somebody?
I, I had one. It's, Bobby sort of asked the chief, um, but just to piggyback on his first question about, I, I wasn't sure. I don't think the contract specifies it and the letter didn't indicate. But does this open, um, additional opportunities to our officers for, uh, private duty? Or is this dependent on the mutual aid? Does the company have overflow that presents additional opportunities?
Um, I'm gonna say, I don't know, not really, because the opportunities the officers have now would still be in place. Um, we, the only time we can do mutual aid with other communities is if we have an agreement signed with them. I will tell you, we have an agreement signed with Seymour. We have an agreement signed with Nogatuck. Um, and depending on the year, sometimes, uh, it ebbs and flows. Sometimes they are all working here and you've seen officers from other departments here. And then sometimes we're working there. It just really depends on who has, uh, more work. I will tell you that it's becoming much more common because departments are so short of manpower.
But that, that's what I assumed, chief. I just wanted to make sure this contract.
That's why we entered it. I, I've already been approached, um, by another, I don't want to get into detail, but I've been approached by another department, um, that wanted to do the same thing, just because they're having a hard time. Um, so, and these towns that we have, like Nogatuck, we have a mutual aid compact with, they have eleven or twelve mutual aid compacts with other towns. Seymour is the same way. They have multiple. Um, so unfortunately, because we don't have, we're all short officers. This is what it's, what, what it's coming down to, but it won't either take away or expand the number of jobs they would get. It would be basically the, this vendor is, is just doing what we're currently doing now, but in, we're doing it in-house and, you know, having to chase people.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a no-brainer as well.
All right. So the chief is, uh, basically requesting to, uh, have the ability to enter into this contract again. It's as it states in there, he's got the ability to, uh, get out with thirty days' notice, but, um, like, looking for approval, um, from us tonight.
Motion to, uh, adopt the contract as noted and.
Second.
Contract.
Motion by Mamon, second by Duranty. Any, any further questions or?
One, one comment, Tony, um, did you, I don't, I didn't hear the language authorize the chief to execute. I don't know if that's needed or not, but.
That was so amended if needed.
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking for.
There you go. Thanks, Joe, as usual.
Okay, so, um, amended motion by Mamon, second by Duranty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Your motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thank you all. I appreciate the, the support. Thank you very much. And like I said, I, I think it's going to work. It's not something we've been doing willy-nilly. This has been going on for about a year. That we've been. So.
Look.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Uh, all right. Um, we have nothing under old business and we do not have executive session. So we only have one item left. I know you guys are having a good time, but.
Wait, could I just, could I just make an, um, the animal shelter is in need of, you know, it this for anybody here, you know, on the meeting or any friends or family. If you have any extra towels, blankets, anything warm that you could, uh, you know, donate, it would be greatly appreciated. And Jeannie and all of her animals down there would greatly appreciate it as well. Thanks, Josh.
What's, uh, Tony, what, what's the drop-off point for those? I mean.
Right at the shelter. It's a.
Cave, salt cave, that salt cave place also.
Okay.
Oh. I don't know what, what is that cave store salt thing?
Salt cave.
Okay.
Where's that? It's the salt cave.
I'm.
It's on Main Street.
You guys have to stop saying.
I don't know what it is. I, I know it's a salt cave.
Two doors down from the Goodfellas Barber Shop.
Yeah.
Or right next door to the, is it China, China Garden, China Sea?
Yeah.
Chinatown, hmm.
Didn't they just move?
Tennessee.
No, that's the new salon that the salt cave is there also.
Yeah.
I thought the salt cave was down by Massamino's, right?
They are move, they are moving, but I don't think they've moved yet.
Oh. Just bring them to the shelter.
Exactly. See a head popping out the, see a head popping out there behind you, Bobby. The dog agrees.
Yeah, he's chewing his blanket.
He agrees.
The salt place is on West Main Street now, right across from the railroad station.
Thanks, Joe.
Joe, there you go. How are you, Joe?
Yeah, hit it, Rivers. Let's go.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, before we adjourn, can we just say hello to Diane? I, I see you here, Diane. I hope you're doing well.
Thank you. I am.
Hi, Diane. Nice to see you.
Happy New Year, Diane.
Glad you're here.
Uh-huh. Thanks. Good to be with you.
Second emotion.
Uh. Rivers and we had a second, I thought, but, well, whatever. Gin, uh. All favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye. Night. Thank you.